At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Board of Supervisors. David, Mike Stein, and myself. We have Lisa Smith. From the Auditor's Office, Wendy, our administrative assistant. And our first appointment this morning is with David Driver.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just have a. Two items today. First item is a. For working right away for John Grum installing a new farm service. In Iowa Township, Section Three and Ten on Eighty-Third Street with McCulloch Valley Electric. Recommend approval of that.
I made a motion to approve the farm electric service for John Grum. Second. Motion and a second. Approve the utility permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And then. Agreement, a funding agreement with Iowa DOT for. Project involving resurfacing. Z forty from Clinton County to Miles. It's a short segment. That's the project that Clinton County will administer. This is for the highway safety funds that Iowa DOT is providing for us for forty-two thousand dollars to put in the edge rumble strips.
Center two.
Pardon me.
Center rumble two.
No, just aside. The project number, please says H S I P dash S W A P dash C zero forty-nine. Run eighty-seven. Dash F J dash forty-nine.
Motion to approve.
That was for how much?
Forty-two thousand dollars.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know. Luann, do you want to come up? Marty is sick.
Right.
Brent's not due till the twenty after.
And Becky's phone is busy right now, so. That's all right. This'll work. Good morning.
Morning.
Right. Calendar for the week. Six o'clock tonight is Jackson County Economic Alliance for Jack, and I believe they're doing it by seven.
Yeah.
Also, at six o'clock, it's a Conservation Board meeting at Hurstville for Larry. Wednesday, January nineteenth, at one P M, is a Jackson County Security Advisory Committee meeting for Mike. From two to four is a McCulloch River Watershed Management Authority meeting with the county of Dubuque. On their project, and that's by MS Teams for Larry. At four o'clock is an E C I A Executive and Council meeting along with E C D C. By Zoom for Jack. And at five-thirty is the Soil and Water Conservation District's Long Range Conservation Planning Meeting. It's by Zoom or at the Southern Community College. Thursday, January twentieth, from one-thirty to three is the Small Town Big Message webinar. And Jack has signed up for that at this point. I can sign up anybody else that wants to do. Yeah. At six o'clock is Limestone Gloves R C and D meeting also for Jack, and that will be by Zoom. Monday, January twenty-fourth, at one P M, is a Regional Governing Board meeting in Davenport for Jack. At four o'clock is Early Childhood Iowa Council meeting in Duett for Jack. And at five o'clock is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Jack. Our next.
I launch.
Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, at nine A M. And Jack has a call, a temporary call that afternoon, one o'clock on the bonds.
So the watershed meeting in Dubuque, Dubuque County, is that in person?
It's by MS Teams, which is like Zoom.
Okay.
So. And it's on your iPad.
It's a new one.
Yeah.
Well, it's one he's used before, though.
Okay.
Yeah, there is on all yours, just in case you need it, so.
Okay.
If you put on the link, it should take you right into that program.
All right, sounds good.
Okay. Um, today I have a request for a proclamation for School Choice Week. Whereas all children in Jackson County should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas Jackson County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Jackson County to be successful adults. And whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Jackson County. And whereas Jackson County is home to a multitude of excellent education opportunities from which parents can choose for their children. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Jackson County has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, organizations. To raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, we Jackson County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize January twenty-third to January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. As Jackson County School Choice Week and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. For a motion to approve.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation, the school choice week for January twenty-third to January twenty-ninth of twenty-two.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the proclamation, School Choice Week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Um, now I have some appointments. The first appointment is a resignation. To accept the resignation of Kathy Washtaba from the Jackson County Conservation Board after a total of seven years of service.
Motion to approve. I would say.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And I am looking for a motion to appoint Mary Hayward to fill Kathy Washtaba's position on the Conservation Board. For a new five-year term that expires December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Is she taking over? Is that what Kathy's was to expire?
Correct, yes. Kathy declined to be reappointed to a new term.
And was Mary the only applicant we had?
Yes. She's applied for the Conservation Board before.
I, I guess I would make a motion to approve that.
I would second. A motion to appoint Mary Hayward to the Conservation Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carried.
Then I have a reappointment. I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Larry Ambrosi. To the Pioneer Cemetery Commission for a new three-year term that expires December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
So has she agreed?
Yes.
Okay, because the last time I talked to him, he was seen to back off a little bit.
Well, I haven't talked to Larry, but I go through Joanne, and she said he was willing to be reappointed.
Okay, yeah, I would second that.
The motion and a second to appoint Larry Ambrosi to the Pioneer Cemetery Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Right. And in your packets, under the appointments tab, you'll find. The eminent domain commission list. For twenty-twenty-one. On this list, everyone was contacted and only one declined to be reappointed, and that was Laura Klassen.
So I did go back and look and make sure that some of these were licensed and still active, and they are, because I didn't think they were. But is there conflict for Tom to do that now or not? As his position as mayor? Would that be a conflict or no?
I have no idea.
I don't either.
And I think that's a question we'd have to ask Sarah. So she sees as a, as a conflict.
I can ask her about that. Um, oh, sorry.
Can we approve it pending that or?
Pending, yes.
I would think that we could. Or.
I think maybe if there was a. Somebody in McCulloch, but then I'm sure that he would decline.
Well, yeah, but isn't it just, just the county? Or the county? Emergent Domain? Not the city? I, I was on the board years ago on Emergent Domain, and that. Then to one situation and it resolved before we had the meeting, but.
So if you have a situation, they call everybody on this list or?
Um, I think they make it a test, too, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we were supposed to meet at the site, and then like the day before it got pulled off, they changed their mind. But. Um. No, I certainly think we could reappoint if everybody was contacted, reappoint pending. You know, if that's okay.
Yeah, I reached out to everybody on the list. Um, and Terry Rolling, obviously, kind of does the legwork on this for me, finding new people. He did say, Paula Bodice did not respond to me, but he said she has moved away from the area. So she's the other one that's coming off the list. And then. Terry had Sue Floal submit an application to replace. Laura Klassen at this point as a city property owner. I think you have her application in your binder as well. And Sarah's approved. The appointment that you're already with on.
So do you want us to check with Sarah to see if Tom, if there is a conflict?
Or we can reappoint everybody except him if you want.
Yeah, can we make the motion to appoint everyone with, with the assumption that we check to see if it's a conflict for Tom or if it's.
And if it's not, then you'd be reappointed.
Then we'll have, then he'll have to resign anyway, and then we'll have to reappoint somebody, so it's not like.
Right, so that's your motion?
It is.
A second. A motion and a second to. Prove the eminent name list except for necessarily and get clarification as to whether it is a conflict of interest now. The mayor and the city in McCulloch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
We need a motion to appoint Susan Floalman, or is that part of that?
It's part of the list.
Part of the list. Thank you.
Um, you want to see if Becky's available to come down? Or I guess I should. It is actually nine fifteen. Are there any visitors or citizens that wish to address the board?
I think she's ready. You'll be fine. Let's see if you're ready.
It doesn't look like it, so. We'll move forward with.
Oh.
She got really comfortable in my favor.
I said you needed a rest.
I need a rest. Pretty good idea.
At this work time, we're being joined by Brent Kilburg and Andrew. Juan and Deputy Chacon for Human Resource. Gus and Salaries.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thanks for allowing us time to speak with the board this morning about increasing our correctional officers' wages. As you all know, we've had, we've recently struggled to fill our correctional officer openings in a jail. We've been working the current staff nonstop to cover those shortages. Which is costing a lot of overtime. Saturday night, there was another attack on correctional officers at the Coralville Correctional Center. And everyone is aware of the recent attack of the animals in prison as well. These are the threats our C O's routinely have to be wary of, and on top of that, we recently had a COVID outbreak in our jail, and the staff had to deal with that environment as well. In conversation with the public, we make almost twice as much as our jailers. They explain they wouldn't do that job, not only for the money they make, but definitely not for what we've paid our correctional officers in the past. The jail is the single biggest point of liability in the entire county, hands down. The best way to deter that liability is to have the right employees running it. The best way to ensure that is to pay them a wage competitively to other jails that we can employ and retain quality. As an example, Dubuque County starts their correctional officers at twenty-four dollars an hour, and after only four years, they go to thirty dollars an hour. The wage we're asking for is nowhere near that, but at least gets us in the market of attracting quality correctional officers. Appointing jail administrator along is the first step in running our jail correctly. He continues to improve our jail. And grow into his huge responsibilities. And with that, I believe we'll talk about the wage scale.
Yeah, so as we, whoops, sorry. So as we work through the FY twenty-three budget process, we've kind of talked extensively about the wages with our correctional officers and how far they have gone behind. We compare wages from multiple entities, including like-sized counties, like-sized facilities, like-sized geographical areas, including Clinton, Scott, Dubuque, and all of those kind of things. It's very clear that our employees are significantly behind where they should be. In comparison to those figures that we have reviewed. So not only are we not adequately compensating our current staff in order to retain and recruit staff, we do need to get that base wage that we're offering. Up somewhere closer to where that position should be paying. We feel it's a must to do this now, even though we had talked about it through budget work sessions for fiscal year twenty-three. We would like to request now to make an immediate adjustment effective January twenty-third, which would be the start of the very next payroll. You have in front of you a proposed pay adjustment for current officers as well as what we would propose for new correctional officer pay scales effective immediately as well. The new pay scale would include any adjustments going forward throughout the fiscal years. If you award an additional pay increase to staff on July first of each year, we would want to adjust those annually as far as that goes as well.
Comments?
Uh, well, we had a work session last week regarding, and it's pretty obvious. What their pay scale was is. To me is just disrespectful, for one thing, and the toxic environment that they're working in is another issue besides that, you know? So it's not ideal working condition by any means. And for us to retain help, I mean, you know what the situation is now with the public? I mean, it doesn't matter where you drive down the street, there's help wanted, so it's. You know, they certainly can have benefits and, and a good wage at, at a job that's not quite as demanding, I would say.
Well, I think that, you know, as. Who indicated Brent in our conversations is. Um, we hate to be the training ground for the surrounding counties to. We train them, then they go somewhere else because obviously they pay a higher wage, so. That's why we discussed this and thought that it was an appropriate time to make an adjustment now, and then possibly. We're still working on the budget, but possibly an additional increase at the beginning of our fiscal year. I'm totally in agreement with it. I think it's something that needs to be done, and that's why we brought it up and had you come over and talk to us last week.
And I'm in full agreement with it, too. Really needs to be done.
With, with, with a little bit coming with Jack, that we have, we have been through this before as far as the educational part of it and reimbursement. Is there that reimbursement policy that we put in place? Does that include? Uh, just certain offices or where they go?
That was implemented for the Assessors Office to do the sense of training and their deputy certifications. It isn't, it's something that could be implemented. There's a lot of sheriff's departments that do it as far as if you send them to the academy. Um, Andrew has since obtained his certification to be able to certify our correctional officers without sending them actually to the academy, which is a huge benefit of the county right there. Uh, but it is something that we can discuss and implement.
Well, I think it's maybe something that, right, you can discuss in your office and, and maybe with Becky, you know, with customers, human resources, and maybe. I mean, think about that anyway, you know? I don't know if we can keep them or not, or if it's, if it's a policy that makes sense. You know, I, I get where you're going here. We send them off to jail school and to. Certification for this or that, and when they have these, of course, and they have their credentials behind their name, and they apply somewhere else, well, we paid for that.
Which is why we want to be at least comparable within our local geographical area, because our employees are going to go to Dubuque, Clinton, Scott. They're going to go within a thirty-mile drive.
There's nothing to travel thirty miles.
Yeah. So we put, they put a lot of consideration and weight into all of those numbers. You know, some of them, you can look at the jail size we're at now and the jail size that we're hopefully going to go to completely, two different things, you know? So comparables are hard as far as that respect, but the job is the same of all the correctional officers, so.
And it's not, and it's not difficult because we have. Correctional officers that live in Bellevue, down in Preston area, towards Saint Denis in that area, so. It's just as easy to drive to Dubuque or just to drive to Clinton.
Absolutely. Half, half my jail staff lives as close to another jail as they do ours, so. Uh, and we're not even competitive with the, the wage that the other jails are paying. We're, we're just going to lose them eventually, and I'd rather not do that. We've got good people now, and I want to keep them.
Well, and that's how you retain the people. It's not a secret, and like I said, this day and age, when they can go. Do whatever they want, basically. Get a job at, at, at a factory, even if they can do that or like to do that, but. I mean, it ain't too hard to listen to Dubuque from a COVID radio station to see if there are jobs available. Um, and we know that your department has done more, more training or more schooling, I would think, than, than past, and. And absolutely, we certainly want to take a look at, you know, can we retain them or? Put that policy maybe in place.
Sure.
Yeah, the ones we've been fortunate enough to retain at this point, I think they've stuck around because they buy into the difference we're making. The future professional jail we're going to have, and they've stuck around to, to want to see that be a part of that, of that vision.
Well, that's certainly going to be a much different facility, which. You know, I mean, the conditions are going to be much safer, for one thing, I should say, than.
And we need to be able to recruit quality staff.
Yeah.
For that, so. So we would actually be looking for two separate motions today. The first one would be a motion to approve the current correction pay officer adjustments as presented.
That motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the current correction officer pay adjustment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And as long as we'll be looking for a motion to approve the new correctional officers' pay scale, which would allow them to hire within that year pay grade.
So moved.
The motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I just want to say I can't express enough gratitude to show my appreciation to the board for the support of this new step wage system. It's probably the single biggest thing that will impact the success of not only the current, the future jails. If anyone watching out there knows of a friend or relative that'd be interested in becoming a part of the future success of Jackson County Correctional Team. Be watching for our added field positions in the very near future. The old Jackson County's a jail is a memory in the rearview mirror. The new professional Jackson County Jail is on the horizon in the future. I challenge anyone out there to become a member of our team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing I want to clarify. So on January third, I had a mandatory vaccination and testing policy approved that was then required under the emergency temporary standards through OSHA. Since then, um, the Iowa Division of Labor issued a statement stating that after reviewing the federal OSHA standard, it was not going to adopt it for the state of Iowa. As well, on January thirteenth, the Supreme Court blocked the ruling that was upheld by the Sixth Circuit Court that would have mandated our compliance by reinstating the injunction. Um, with that, we are not required to comply. This could still be a long drawn-out process that is still in litigation through district courts. However, they would have to have all of that heard and. Answered on by six months from the time the emergency standard went into effect, which was November. We don't foresee that happening. Um, even if it does make it through the district court, it's going to end up back in the Supreme Court. So as of right now, we feel the best action is to rescind the policy altogether, so there's no confusion on what our vaccination and mask mandate will be. Um, I would request for, I would request a motion to rescind the Jackson County mandatory vaccination and testing policy effective immediately.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
A little bit.
Huh?
In the event it makes it through any other court level, it's probably all going to change by the time it's back to any of our desks anyway, so we did do diligence and being compliant with the standard that was required and a mandate at the time.
Yes.
Um, unfortunately, they didn't weigh in on the status of compliance until after the deadlines.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you're watching the new channel, it's just pretty much turmoil now or.
Yeah.
Across the, across the country, you know?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's cool.
Hey, Marty is not in today. He is here, so. You want to start? Alyssa, and then Will. We are going to have. Heidi.
Heidi, I've been, I just texted Heidi. She's going to be on here shortly.
We'll recess till she joins.
Okay.
At this time, we'll reconvene the meeting and. Lisa and Heidi are going to be joining us about the jail bond. So good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Heidi. Hey, I'll, I'll just do a little bit of my business, and then we'll pass this resolution, or we can at least talk about it. How about that?
Sounds great. Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, so this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. An authorized publication in the official newspaper.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting being published. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seven cents.
I would note that of those claims, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents are secondary row. It's in that also three, three payment for three bridges.
Good point, and I would make that motion to approve.
I would second. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And so Heidi, this is where we get to the part of the resolution. Would you like to speak in regards to that?
Can't hardly wait.
Good morning. So today on the agenda, you have a resolution to approve the preliminary official statement. Um, it's a one hundred and thirteen-page document. Um, half of it is your most recent. Um, audit, and then the other is the, the document that will be used in conjunction with the financing. It does require a board approval of the preliminary document in order for it to be disseminated out to potential investors.
Are you going to read that to us?
I will read any and as much as you would like. Um, it, this document is, is reviewed and put together by Northland. Your bond counsel reviews it. Um, and this county has had a chance to look at it as well. It is preliminary and will be finalized. Um, at, after the sale of the bonds, as it will have the final bond numbers in that as well, so. Um, any questions on that document?
It's fifty-nine. I mean, I guess Heidi. You're the expert in this. Is there any concerns or any, any red flags that we should be concerned about?
Um. I've reviewed the document. Um, I don't have any concerns with the document. It is the county's, uh, you know, it is the county's document. That is used in conjunction with this. It has all the, you know, most of this information is found readily online, but it's all put together on one, uh, in one document. I, I do feel comfortable with the document where it is at today. And.
Hey, Lisa, has our bonding attorney seen the document?
I, between Heidi and I, I think we talked, we talked to our bonding attorney quite a bit. Steve Nadel is our bonding attorney, and he has been advising me. He is the, uh, our counsel did come up with this resolution for today, so he has reviewed it and approved it. And when I presented you today, what I gave you in your packet is the resolution. And that did come from, yeah, from Alerson, correct. Yep, that's it. That staple global document that I gave you today is what Steve furnished for us, so we can pass today to, to get this moving, so to speak.
I mean, what I'm hearing is this pretty basic operating procedure, right?
Yes, um, this is, is the offering document in relation to it. It has, you know. Some information related to the bonds and some things. It's just, um, you know, who's, lists the current boards of supervisors and lists. Um, where your general funds are at, where your valuations have been. And then. Just, just general market information as well on, uh, you know, the tax exemption of the bonds and, and, and that these will be bank-qualified bonds, so. This still is in preliminary form, too, and so if, um, if I was to find some sort of typo or needed to adjust. if I was to find some sort of typo or needed to adjust a number here or there, that, after board approval, we do have the ability to make any changes and adjustments to the document too.
Yes, I'm comfortable with having you on board and having the bonding attorney, you know, uh, with information and providing us with guidance, I should say, and, uh, I'm comfortable with that, I guess.
Yeah, we're not doing this alone. Definitely are being, you know, correctly, we wanna do it, you know? And so we're dotting our i's, we're crossing our t's, and we have, uh, excellent guidance from Heidi and from Steve. So if you agree, what I would ask then today is a motion to approve resolution number eight five eight dash zero one dash eighteen dash twenty twenty, approving the official statement on general obligation capital loan notes slash series twenty twenty-two A, that the preliminary official statement in the form presented to this meeting be and the same hereby is approved to form ending final for per, proposed of rule fifteen C two dash twelve of the Securities and Exchange Commission, subject to such revisions, corrections, or modifications, as the chairperson and auditor upon the advice of bond counsel and the county's underwriter shall determine to be appropriate and is authorized to be distributed in connection with the offering of the notes for sale as presented.
That was great.
I would make a motion to approve.
I would second. A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Uh, we can do a roll call.
I saw that in here.
Okay, yes, and we will do a roll call vote. So, uh, Steinis? Willie?
Hi.
And McDevitt?
Yes.
And then Heidi, I do have a couple of other questions that I'll be calling you. Do you have time today?
I sure do. Um, feel free to call me, um, anytime, actually after two o'clock today would be perfect.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Heidi.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Our next is Matt and Tricia Wagner at ten o'clock, and it's not quite twenty minutes to ten. Um, any reports on boards or commissions?
We can report nine one one board, um, we're still moving forward and we've got most of the equipment in this needed. It's just weather permitting and ongoing process. Uh, we do have a letter drafted to send to the hospital and ask for assistance, so we're moving forward with that also.
Okay. Bjorn, do you wanna give us an update on what's happening with the rewiring?
Sure. Um, they just came yesterday, actually, and did their walkthrough to try and kind of find pathways. Um, they'll start work tonight after hours, work ten hour days, um, after hours, Monday through Thursday. So, they will be doing a lot of drilling and making noise, so we're gonna try and keep business as usual during the day. Um, there will be some times where it will be wireys, wires hanging from the ceilings and walls, so it won't look pretty here for a while, but, um, as with anything, has to get worse before it gets better, so. We'll, uh, we'll know a lot more tonight after they get drilling and, and some more pathways here.
And. Local law enforcement, police officers.
I have a, Brent, Brendan Simon and Bob Lane, so they should know that there's, we lights on possibly till two in the morning. And a lot of noise. Yes.
So, they have any estimate as to how long it's gonna take them?
Um, yesterday morning, when, before they did their walkthrough, they were thinking three weeks, we'll see how.
Now they're thinking four.
They said they won't stop at three weeks, so.
That's good.
Are they doing any, um, conduit mounting to the ceiling or anything like that, or is it all very?
Uh, it's the plan right now is to do everything overhead, um, in the ceiling. We'll see how the access goes. Uh, I know that there's some concern getting to this side of the building. That side seems to be fine. This side, it's, it's been done, so it's just how they're gonna get there. Fish tanks and push rods. They were talking about going to my home depot, push rod last night. We'll see, see what they come with today.
I put a few security systems in for McDonald's restaurants and cameras, so that drive ups and stuff. Yeah. It looks like a pretty ceiling here, and you pop that tile open, there's stuff going everywhere.
Yeah, this is, this is crawling your belly if you're lucky, if you're a small guy, ceiling here, so it's not a, you can't crawl on your hands and knees either, so.
Be interesting. Well, the guy that bit it, and they need to hit him for it.
He's been here and he may come back.
Where can I end up with a significant box in the back room?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's a rack, it's a four post rack.
Did you give him the rack?
No, those are precious racks.
In the, in, I mean, we could keep our current equipment, but this will just make things a lot nicer. I mean, if it's gonna take up some more room, how we have our back room, yes, but.
When you're talking, we, your back room? Well, if we're gonna upgrade, we're gonna upgrade. We can do it half of it, then, right?
That, that room is temperature controlled.
Yeah.
So we have to continue with.
Sure.
The only thing that we may do is, depending on how it looks coming out of the ceiling, we may cover up our glass just to, for the aesthetics. I don't know, we'll see what it looks like, but if we have too much coming out of the ceiling and dropping into the box, we may very well cover up some of that, just.
Yeah, or even the west side or something.
There'll be two hundred cables coming down, it's just, but I think.
Just two hundred?
That's all.
Yeah.
So.
How will you be able to even see in that room?
Well, and you know that it's secure, it's safe back there, um, only keys, only employees at the auditor's office have access to our office, so it's definitely, it's secure, and that's very critical, um, in today's standards for cybersecurity and everything else.
Um, last night, we did have our nine one, no, talked about nine one one, we had our Together We Build meeting last night. And, um, uh, there, they are going to be having their bid letting, um, and opening of bids. Um, they want to do it in our office, since the building will be ours after it's completed. We'll have, we'll hold the title and, um,
I'm just gonna say you don't know the approximate basis, bids are due, do you?
Bids will be, um, due on March first, and they will be, bids will be opened, um, on, uh, March third, twenty twenty-two at two P M.
So we can anticipate bids coming into our office and.
And they are coming to the auditor's office. They shall be timestamped and dated. Um, their, um, plans will go out to prospective general contractors the first week in February. Uh, prefer to have three to four weeks to bid. Um, bids will be due March first, twenty twenty-two, and on Thursday, March third, twenty twenty-two, at two P M, bids will be opened at two oh five.
Okay, so we're gonna take bids in until March first, at what time?
Um.
At two?
It doesn't say.
Well, then why are we having a bid opening at two oh five?
The bids have to be here by March third, Thursday, March third, twenty twenty-two. Um, bids will be due on Tuesday, March first, twenty-two, twenty, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one word. Bids will be due on March first, twenty twenty-two, or Thursday, March third, twenty twenty-two, at two P M. They haven't decided for sure. Um, uh, and then, uh, bids will be opened at two oh, two oh five. And I'm assuming it'll either be two oh five on March first or two oh five on March third, whichever they end up deciding. And it says, um, in the information they got from John, precast will be delivered in October or November.
Wow, I haven't done with it there. Oh, that's for sure.
And last night, um, at the meeting, um, they said that they, um, have two point six five million raised.
Two point.
Six five.
Six five. That included like, uh, contractors that are, are gonna do some work or.
In kind.
In kind, yeah.
They have two hundred thousand in kind. Um, uh.
But just.
I believe it is. And they still have, um, we're, our, our, our contribution is part of the common space in the, in the entryway, but they still have room for somebody that, if they wanna donate, donate two hundred thousand, the rest of it could be theirs. And then they still have one office that's available at twenty-five thousand to sponsor that office. And, um, there's still some in the kitchen that's available for donations. They, um, indicated that the anonymous donor of the four hundred thousand dollars has made their payment. And, um, but they do not want the bill named after them, and they wanna remain anonymous. So, things are moving, and, uh, they sold, um, they made, um, five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars was deposited from their sale of pies.
It's a lot of pies. Good job, well done.
And they still, and they, they made them at the Odd Creek Church Building. They said it worked perfect for them. Hmm, there was lots of room, and they said they had as many as twenty women up there making pies.
How fun.
Yeah. So, my aunt used to do that when you were. And they would bake. It was under pies. Every day, she had a group come over to her house, and they baked these pies and gave them away for uh, shelters and all different things like that, for years and years and years. It's been a long time ago. She just recently died, I think last year, ninety-three or something. Quite the project.
And I, I do know they have a cost estimate, but that's the, the, the building committee, and I'm not on the building committee, so I haven't.
Yeah, I read the minutes too, so, but try to keep up with them.
Anything else from anybody? Not, we'll recess until we're joined by Matt Beck and Tricia Wagner from E C I A. Time will recon. And we're joined, being joined by, uh, Tricia and Holly from E C I A.
Yes.
Good morning.
Do we have anyone on Zoom as far as like, some, or sorry, is that only Lisa?
Um, nobody, you can see who's, who's, uh, so there's nobody from E C I A.
Okay, perfect. I didn't know. Oh, so, um, Jennifer Adams is going to attend with us from the Leisure Lake Association, but she's not able to, she was COVID. So, she's so be concerned with the Zoom week if we would like to, she would try to join, but it's up to you. She was going to have a replacement come in.
Well, if she wants to zoom in, that's fine with me.
Okay. Um, we can talk about it, it's no big deal, but I am so making sure he's not sitting out here, because he might not know. If you would like to send it to her is J, P as in Paul, A, B as in boy, I, T as in Tom, Z, at hotmail dot com.
Okay, you just forward that to Luanne, and she can copy and paste that, and just that way. Were you listening to that?
What am I supposed to send?
So this is the new, uh, the pavilion that they tore down, and they're proposing to build a new one, correct?
So, it's technically not tore down, it's, um, kind of in.
No, it's down, it's been down.
It's down?
Oh, I think it's been down over here.
I'm gonna look at it, says you need to get this down for something.
No, I think it's, I think it's been.
There, Matt and I, and are we talking about the same?
Well, I don't know. I should say that. This is up by the, by the, uh, restrooms and the laundry room and the, and the open pavilion that they had.
No, this is by the, the open, like the little mini goal. It's like a block building. It was there in the fall.
Okay, so the block building.
Building stays. There was a shelter next to it.
There was a, there was an open pavilion next to it. Yeah, so the block building is actually the restrooms and the laundry, that correct?
Restrooms, I think.
I think, isn't there?
No, there's something else in there.
Yeah, I think that block building is a, is a, is the bathrooms and the.
Yeah, and that's the one that they want to.
So there was an open pavilion next to that with a concrete.
That was gone. So, yep, there's only one building there, and they wanna expand it, make it bigger, um, rework bathrooms in the kitchen, and make it like an open space so that they can, you know, socially distance. Correct. So basically, um, that's the project, and if it was torn on, they couldn't even apply for this. So it's basically rehabbing that existing building, um, basically for community events, fisheries, et cetera. Jennifer would be great to talk more about this, because obviously she's part of, um, the organization. They've raised over sixty thousand dollars so far for this project. Um, and recently, um, the state has come out with their COVID funding, um, through, uh, C D B G. So it's, um, basically has to be kind of a tide of COVID, but she is tying that extra space, it's socially distanced, um, and then prepare meals in a safer environment, um, without people being so close. Um, so basically, our ask today, any of these C D B G COVID-related grants have to be either city or a county applicant, or, um, non-applicant too, I think, but they're technically not a city, obviously. So we are wondering if the county would be the pass-through, um, agency for this funding. We would administer the grant, um, make sure all the rules are followed, um, they have to validate the vacant, they have to prepare everything. Um, this is just kind of what I handed out here is their estimated preliminary budget. Before we got any really final numbers, we wanted to make sure we had your support, um, on their behalf, um, to do this, so.
Well, I know when I talked to Kelly, Kelly said basically, that's, that was the gist of it. She said they've raised the matching funds. So they're not asking us for any money.
No.
Just the administrative part of it.
Well, we would technically administer, because, um, you do have, now C D B G requires, um, you to be a certified person to administer, so cons are getting certified.
You're assuming we're not certified, huh?
Sorry, I mean, you guys can sit through the week long training if you prefer, but I would highly, no. Yeah, yeah, but the most we would be asking, in all honesty, would be, they would drop up, we would draw down the funds. It would go into the Jackson County account, Elisa or Lisa, sorry, I always say, cause I like.
It's okay, yeah.
Um, would be issuing the check to Leisure Lake or E C I A, however, whoever's getting that funding, so.
Okay, so.
That's basically the bottom line.
Make sure I understand it correctly. It's just a pass-through to us, and we are administrated as a county, but there's no commitment from us, correct?
Correct. You would not have to pay a dime, except for a little bit of, uh, you know.
The time.
Other than maybe we can help you with, um, some engineering and topi, uh, topography survey?
We can do that. I don't, who could do this?
She, she, uh, what is, um. Something like Horizon or, um, Origin.
Origin design.
So you're looking at eighty thousand dollars for just the architectural and engineering? So up here, it says it's a twelve foot. So you're looking at eighty thousand dollars for just the architectural and engineering. So up here it says it's a twelve foot. Like ceilings, metal shingle roof, wood frame walls and rough trusses. Down here, they have a concrete ceiling with, uh. Where's that? Concrete, eight inch concrete walls, ten inch reinforced concrete roof slab. So they're not even the same building.
They're, they're entertaining the idea of making it like a safe shelter.
Cause they can get some funding for that as well.
And that, this is just a preliminary proposal. Um, they added that on to their original proposal.
Okay, so we're putting a building up down here that is forty-eight by seventy-two. And this is twenty-nine by sixteen eight.
But you're talking two different things, aren't you? The community building is one.
What they're talking about is basically what we got down there without, with an open shelter. We're, we're spending. Where we having that one?
Hundred thousand for just the.
Fifteen thousand for the concrete work. There's not anywhere close to six hundred and ten thousand dollars. I mean, this is just. Way out of whack. And the cost, architectural and engineering, seventy thousand dollars. We don't do that for bridges.
Right, and I, I, yeah, and there are.
This is kind of I W written all over it. I'm sorry.
Everything would have to be prepared anyway. So this is not even, this is just, I think she just wanted to get some input from.
To me that they could build the building for a hell of a lot less.
Well, in the grants only for five hundred, so that's one of the things I asked Tricia to find out what, this is way more than five hundred thousand. I would, even with her sixty-five thousand, uh, match, they're looking at five sixty-five max, so. There's no way where, there's a big gap here, so. So, yeah, cause their original estimate without making it into the storm shelter and without having the estimate from Origin, it was two hundred and twenty-six thousand. For everything. So I'm sure they'll find a way to, you know, and like I said, this. Or Holly mentioned, this just came through. Literally, this is just, uh.
So they're not proposing to put a concrete roof on the whole facility though. This, this is almost like. An indoor and an outdoor space combined. Is that, is that what I'm getting out of this?
It's all gonna be enclosed, isn't it? Community building.
Larger. Safe shelter. Good. Is she got no? Oh, hi Jennifer. Let's see if she has any. That would be helpful. Yeah, that would be very helpful. I can hear you.
For a little bit.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
I can hear you. How are you today?
We're fine, thank you.
Hi Jennifer, thanks for joining. Jennifer, we were just, um, discussing the grant with Leisure League and the community building. They just, um, the supervisors have some questions as far as the most recent budget you kind of sent us. Um, with the seven eighty and then the eighty thousand for professional services. So could you just fill us in? On, I, we just thought that was preliminary, obviously, you know, this isn't anything set in stone, as you have to get procurement and quotes and all that stuff, but. Could you just fill them in more on like the actual building itself and, and what this is all covering?
Uh, what our main intent was is to build a community center where we can gather. Any time of the year. Uh, we had like a, just a pavilion, a, a roof. Yeah, and we would like to have something that we could use all year long. We also considered putting in the availability for storm shelter for people. There's a lot out here that live in trailers. Um, they don't have a storm shelter. My understanding from talking with Tim Trantle from Origin yesterday. Uh, that's where a lot of the expense is coming. Um, from the area that is, I think they call it the boardroom. Making that the storm shelter would be all concrete, ceiling walls, the whole thing would be concrete. And it would house between, he said, like fifty to sixty-five people. So we didn't understand that that was going to be quite so expensive, obviously. And that's something that we can either size down the building quite a bit. Um, we can consider. Possibly doing just an open air, uh, type of a meeting room instead of the enclosed. Meeting room is just something that we would have to talk with the committee about. Unfortunately, I just got it yesterday and. With me having COVID, I'm not available to meet with anybody. Um, so it's something that we would definitely change down the road because we don't have the rest of those funds. We have about, I think it's sixty or seventy thousand now. And we have a project coming up this coming summer that we're hoping to get a good ten thousand. Um, but you know, uh, fundraising is a long and slow process for us.
Larry, one of the things, the thirty-seven hundred square feet, what size is this building? I mean, the actual.
I'm not sure what the full measurements are. I thought it was on the drawing.
Yeah, I wasn't able to print that. You know what? I was gonna, you know, that's all of you. Would that work or do you have access?
Because, I mean, these numbers, it does.
Yeah, I tried to print it.
Don't make any sense. This is ridiculous. I mean, this is, this is highway robbery is what it is. And their fees are eighty thousand dollars. Give me a break here. That should pay for the whole building.
Um, normally, it depends on what kind of building you put up. Once you, once you talk. Engineering and. Architectural and engineering, then the price of the game just went up a lot. A lot of these buildings, like your whip buildings and your things like that, they have their own, they have their own engineer, so they're, they're on board. Um, we have an assistant engineer that designs. And does like our ge- geographical typ- typographical surveys and stuff and the geotech stuff. On board with the county, so we may be able to help with some of that too, but what happens is then we, we step on. Origin designs toes a little bit.
It's certainly more cost effective. I mean.
That's wrong. I mean, that's just completely.
I mean, if you put up a, uh, certainly I think you want part of this building enclosed for your meetings and whatnot. If you want to have part of it open, like a entertainment center, like you had other pavilion, that's fine, but I certainly think you want part of it. Enclosed, whether it has a concrete roof, if that's the where you get your most value, I'm okay with that. But if you put a concrete roof on and it costs two hundred thousand and you're only gonna get fifty thousand for someone because you put a concrete roof on it. Then it's not feasible to me.
Well, their price for the concrete roof in that part of is thirty-eight thousand. Throws the rest of the six hundred and ten thousand on.
There, there's no way that I can.
There's no way this makes.
That number to me would not do that, Larry. I don't think you can put that kind of great rope on. That could be for.
Thirty-eight thousand?
I don't know. Depends on how side the building is, I guess. You know, to shore that up and put a concrete rope on there is another animal. Well, you're probably using those.
I've done that already. I see I've planned, actually we've poured, you can set up a plywood structure under it and pour a cap on it. I did it on several houses for garage floors.
But once you use the hollow core tubes and then put on.
Important place. This is only sixteen foot across to be like this room here.
Jennifer, have you talked to the other committee members about this estimate at all or?
No, I just received it, so I have not had the opportunity to do that. I think it was, I was shocked when I saw it.
I don't blame you. I would have been too.
And you didn't get an updated drawing from Or- Origin, did you?
Pardon me?
Get an updated drawing. I, the drawing that I had is the original one you sent me.
Um, that is probably the, that's the one I sent to, uh, Origin.
And they didn't get you an updated one?
No, they did not. They said at that point.
Send it back to him and say, thanks, but no thanks.
Just eliminate them altogether. This is.
Yeah, well, someone had mentioned that there was also somebody in Macocata that we could deal with, but we didn't think that. You know, in the short timeframe that we had, that we could jump in to someone new right off the bat, but this is way more than we thought.
Well, we can get you drawings from our engineer for pennies on the dollar. I mean, literally pennies on the dollar.
What, what's, what kind of deadlines are we looking at here?
I'm sorry, Michael, what was that?
What kind of deadlines are we looking at?
The sooner the better because this is a rolling application and the state taming up money, so we would prefer to get it done ASAP. And we did the L M I survey out there and this has been kind of a, a process that, you know, we have to make sure we have all this. We have to have a preliminary drawing, we have to have preliminary estimates, and if this is not kosher, we'll get it, have Jennifer work on a different one. That we can't use that.
I think time might be a, a, an issue here for us. I, I don't know.
Well, I guess for today, maybe it's a matter of, do we have your support to continue? Um, and come back and show you what is going to be submitted if, if you guys are okay with that.
How much is the grant? Five hundred?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand? Oh, so that's just driving this.
Well, I don't know.
That's driving this.
But yeah, Jennifer, I don't know if you've told them. I don't know.
Seriously, we're looking at a, a pavilion with the restroom and stuff, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm gonna be busy, but I'd be cool to make sure that this doesn't interfere with our bonding. Just, I don't think so. I just want to bring that out. I don't need anything. Right? Idea knowing if that could affect us at all?
No, I wouldn't think so because you guys aren't on the hook for any of it.
But it's our name though, so we're not on the hook, but it's, it does go through us. So I just, because we'd have to probably.
You're not borrowing money or?
No, yeah, I just. I just, because I don't want anything to happen and we're gonna be on the call next week, so. I don't think so either. I just need.
Well, is there, uh, someone in Macocata that I would be able to contact, uh, to start? Like a process of, you know, reconfiguring or doing whatever it is we need to do. Our original plans were to raise, uh, two hundred thousand dollars to build the entire building.
Yeah, that's more in line.
Yeah, and when you said it was the Bacon Davis, one of the guys that lives down here is a contractor and he said that. The building would be, uh, like a hundred and twenty or something normal, but when you add higher wages. He said to estimate it like a hundred and fifty a square foot. Or a hundred and sixty, and so that's where we thought we were probably looking at more like, you know, three hundred or three hundred and fifty. If we had to pay that much in wages. Or you know what I mean? If we had to pay higher, uh, fees, but that seven hundred is, yeah, way out of line. I mean, it's not like we're building this out of gold.
The size of the building is basically forty by sixty.
I believe you are correct.
That's twenty-four hundred square feet.
Yeah.
So they have thirty-seven hundred in you, in their. It looks like.
I'm sorry.
Isn't everything?
Well, forty would be.
So maybe like forty by sixty-four.
That doesn't matter. That's just. It would take, so I guess that would be my suggestion is to go to a contractor that builds buildings. It's like a, like a whip dealer. That's either here or Cottonville or there's several of them out here. Or even a contractor down here, and then there's.
It's forty by ninety-four feet is what it comes out. That's. That's twice as big as things. I don't really think that would fit on that property because of the road. And I know it won't fit on that.
Billion had to be pretty close, well.
Well, this one says forty by sixty.
Yeah.
And that's twenty-four hundred.
I don't know where the thirty-seven come.
And then if you times that by, say a hundred and fifty, it's three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, which I still think.
They got it here at a hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot.
Thirty-seven hundred square feet at one sixty-five a square foot.
And that's based off of, is it someone on the committee, Jennifer, that is a contractor? Is that what you mentioned?
No, that was the, the people at Origin. Um, I contacted Ports and Construction. And they referred me to Origin to get just an, an estimate and then a, a quick design kind of a thing on. Like we were talking about, there's different levels of. Uh, doing a storm shelter, so they were asking what type of a storm shelter. I, we didn't realize there was different levels. Um, so you know, that's, that's how Origin came into play is I did that through Ports and Construction.
I guess I can see that part of it. If you're building a storm structure with a concrete roof and whatnot, that would probably have to be. Engineered to some point to say, yeah, it will withstand X amount of wind and X amount in. A weight and whatnot, but.
Uh, yes, he also mentioned something about, you know, it being snow and having so much snow on a roof and. He just mentioned all kinds of things that I have no knowledge of. Um, obviously, that's why you need professionals.
Any of your, any of your contractors, local contractors or buildings, that people that sell buildings. Would know that and it has specs for that. Now again, I don't know what your benefit is to make it a storm shelter. If the concrete roof is important to you, what's the cost versus what you're getting out, you know?
Um, no, it's, it's not something that's gonna be extremely important. If we had to leave that out, we could do so and. You know, build a separate area, a, a separate building.
Cover that. I think I would certainly goat that way, but again.
The reason why they want that is because they have a lot of mobile homes.
Yeah, I absolutely understand that completely and I think that's not a bad idea.
And that's probably, you know, your donors, if they want, I don't know how, where your donors are coming from, but if that's one of their, you know. When you're selling pitches is they're gonna have a safe place to go. Maybe that's why they're giving you money. I don't know.
So, yeah, it's like they would be putting the restrooms and the kitchen and stuff with a concrete roof on. I guess my suggestion would be to pour a foundation that size and put a basement under it. So you have the full space and have the stairs down and then have the kitchen and bathrooms above it. Like a regular small house. I think that would be, and I mean, you still pour a slab over the basement, that would be your shelter. And then all your plumbing and stuff is underneath there and it's.
So Larry, would they have to basically start over then? That?
Slab needs, no, the, the block building is there, is fine. Let's just leave that alone. Just go over and do the. Yeah, I went out and looked at it last summer.
Is the other shelter like right next to it?
Yeah. Slab is still there.
We just can't. For the parameters of this grant, they can't build new, yeah, you don't have to rehab.
I saw, that's part of it too.
Yeah, that's why it has to be part of this building, like somehow. Could take down a wall and make it bigger over top of that, if that's possible, because that would make work. We're just trying to be a little creative, just because we think this is like a once in a lifetime opportunity type thing, I mean.
So. Well, it's no doubt if they can get, they can grab five hundred thousand dollars, it'd be there to benefit. Wh- what, what the parameters are, the grant may be silly, but. I guess my point is, I'd like to see the, what the final product would entail. And I would be willing to back that with those things attached, basically.
So this floor plan here, this is yours, right?
That's the committee. That was originally sent when we first started talking with Jennifer about the project, so.
This did not come from.
I think this was drawn up maybe by your committee member, Jennifer? Who drew up the map we're looking at?
Uh, yes. Drawn up by Dave Merrill.
Okay, who's on, who lives out there, right?
He's just, yeah, he's just a committee member. Um. I, I guess my question is, how much of the existing building do we have to keep?
It's just, you have to rehab an existing building? It's just, you have to rehab an existing building, um, it doesn't matter if you add on to that building, I'm pretty sure.
But can we tear it down?
Doesn't sound like they, they could, they cannot tear it down.
No, no.
They have to use at least probably two to three walls of it.
Yeah, they can't, no demolition and no new construction. And when we do submit the grant, we have to provide a map, or a.
Okay.
Maybe you can convert that building into your kitchen and your bathroom.
So what is, what is in that building out there?
Right now, it is our boardroom, bathrooms and a little bit of storage.
There's no showers in there?
Uh, there are showers in the bathroom.
And that's part of that building is standing there, so it took and added on to that building to put a kitchen.
Well, there is a kitchen in our boardroom, but the, the, that area, this uh floor is caving in. I mean, it's built back in nineteen seventy-something. And it wasn't, it was, you know, just built by a bunch of volunteers. And it's really starting to crumble, so the thought processes are, you know, talking to the people about building it, and they're saying you need to get in there and dig that all out. Reinforce, and that's expensive. So I didn't know if we could actually. Take any of it down and leave like one existing wall. So that we could fix the problems that are there.
Is there a time we could meet out there and go through this?
There would be, yeah, um.
The issue is here, you've got, I mean, the, the email from Tim. You know, is predicting this building to be thirty-seven hundred, this drawing's twenty, there's a lot of difference, but that's again about a size, half the size of, so.
I don't know what he was looking at, the only, the only changes that we talked about, that I talked about with Tim. Was making changes in the bathrooms, because that's just not, it, it's kinda silly the way it laid out. And um, that's the only changes that we're, we're discussing with him, so I don't know where he got the other dimensions from.
Well, his email reads, we have assumed that the building addition will be approximately thirty-seven hundred square feet.
I mean, it's just forty by eighty, it's only thirty-two hundred, I don't, we're thirty-seven hundred.
Yeah, so, would it be safe to say you guys are somewhat supportive at this?
I'm cer- certainly supportive of the community doing that, if, if it's, if it's overkill, I guess, I don't know how we deal with that, but. The point is, it's, it's time sensitive also.
Sure, right, right.
I have no strings tied, the, the association.
You need a plan and everybody's on the same page, I mean, when you're showing this to somebody and then saying thirty-seven hundred square feet, like. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, and we were hoping to have an updated drawing from Origin with exactly, you know.
This is nuts.
So I guess, yeah, how do we move forward with that, if we're not using Origin, and we would like Jennifer to be able to get a more realistic estimate?
I think their board needs to meet, and they need to discuss this, and if they wanna meet and have us, whoever from the board can. Join them and kind of give them our concerns and, and.
Well, as long as we know you're open to the idea, we'll continue to investigate and help Jennifer out with this.
Right.
It's just a matter of, we didn't wanna like go too far into.
Larry's in the construction business or has been or.
Actually, that building, somebody ran into it back in the, oh, thirty years, twenty-five years ago, and smashed that whole wall in, and I went out and replaced some of the wall.
Really?
New doors in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would be willing to come out and do a walkthrough with you, and if we can get Alex down there, he can draw up the plans. And um, I'll be engineering everything, and it's, I mean, seriously, it's based on the dollar, what are we thinking?
Well, the thing is, as long as that is within the parameters of the grant.
Right.
But if he works for Tommy, maybe. You know how that goes.
I don't know, it's just like open.
I asked what kind of parking was there.
Oh, that's a pretty good site.
There's a small park, there's a school free ground.
Well, I think, um, Jennifer, we need to see if you can get together a board meeting of your association and.
I will go out and meet with you.
Look at, look at things a little differently than what this piece of paper from, um. Tim Trannell, uh, I just think. That's not what you need.
No, it definitely isn't what we need, um, but yes, we would absolutely be open to having anyone come out and help us. Uh, with figuring out what we gotta do.
If you can set up a board meeting and let Luann at our office know. When that would be, so that she can let us know, and whoever can come will try to come, I, I know that. We'll get um Larry there, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so you want a board meeting, or do you want a meeting of our, of our building committee?
Committee would be fine.
That'd be fine.
Okay, there are a lot of board members on our committee, uh, so that should work pretty well. Um, yeah, we can definitely do that, and.
And as they've indicated, as Holly and um Tricia has indicated, it has to be quick, so. Let us know, and um, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Um, uh, yeah, I wish I didn't have this silly COVID thing, um, if I'm better, I'm gonna try to do it for the weekend if that worked. Or are we looking at um weeknight?
For Larry?
I don't think it makes a difference.
Probably daytime is better.
I, I would think daytime would be better for viewing and measuring if we have to and things like that.
Is there somebody out there this afternoon that I could actually go out and look, I mean, it's supposed to be thirty-five today.
What about the gentleman that drew this up, is he available?
Uh, yeah, he might be. He's pretty set on. What he's got in his mind is what he's got in his mind.
Well, I think, good conversation between him and Larry then.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're talking about the man that drew up the floor plan, not, not this uh. Not the email from uh Tim Trannell or whatever his name is.
Correct, we're, we're, Dave Merrill is the, the one who drew up this plan, and he's, um.
That's, that's who I wanna meet with.
And so, pretty set on his drawings.
It's a good plan.
That's good.
Looks good, it's just.
We don't dispute the plan, we dispute the other.
Yeah, 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 I think that the committee themselves, the only thing that they really wanna change is the bathrooms. Um, and they, and I know when I talked to other people, they said not a big deal for changing, you know, the bathroom.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be.
Um, so, I, I can get ahold of Mr. Merrill and ask him to call Larry.
Okay. I'm gonna give her your. My number is three one nine. Five four one, six three five seven.
Okay.
Noon on today.
Okay.
Another day too, if we had to, but today would be nice because of the weather.
Sure. Okay, I will definitely get ahold of him and see if he can contact you.
Okay, great, good, we appreciate your time.
I mean, you don't uh need anything formal from us today that.
No, I mean, we can come back for a formal, you know, do you guys vote on it?
I mean, I think it's certainly a great addition for that community, if they can get this done, there's no doubt about it.
I mean, there's what, three hundred and twenty homes out there, I mean, it's a, it's bigger than a lot of our towns already.
Yeah, and they're, they're very dedicated, and obviously, they've raised a lot of money already, I think, for.
Our big thing is um finding out from Heidi, if it's.
I'm sure it's okay, but I just.
Yep, no, I totally get it, I don't blame you on it, so, um, yeah, if you guys have any questions in the meantime, we'll be back again. Yeah, it's a nice super drive.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks Jennifer for joining, we'll be getting better.
Oh, thank you. I hope so too.
Okay, is there any other business to come before our meeting today? I have a motion and a second to adjourn, we do have a couple of work sessions following this board meeting, so. Um, but I don't believe we'll be taking any action, we'll just be working on. Programs, so all those in favor? Motion carried.